Public comments, do we have any today? No? Okay, thank you. That'll move us on to items to be placed on our regular city commission agenda, which is the minutes from the May 16 study session and the May 18 regular meeting. Commissioners, you okay with moving that on to our regular meeting? Great, thank you. Move us on to items for presentation and discussion. Item one will be a review of our April monthly reports. We'll start with Commissioner Graves.
I have no questions. I'm gonna kind of save my comments for after Cal has his speech here in a bit.
Okay, great. Commissioner Kayler?
I have none at this time.
Commissioner Clayton?
None at this time.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
That's why I wait for you to laugh.
I think so. Page 14. Our idle funds, again, I like watching that and seeing that rates are climbing. That's exciting news for, as a depositor, obviously. And I know that we just renewed one here. It looks like at 1.07 with the Kansas Misal investment pool and Melanie or purchase. So tell me about, can you tell me about the most current rates? Because rates have gone up since that one was issued back in, when was that? A while back, anyway.
Sorry, instead of hollering from back there. I did print off the rates as of today, and they do continue to go up. So this was just, this was invested in April at the 1.07%. As of today, the minimum that we can accept rates from local banks is 1.58%. So they are going up. And now that was not the rate that we would be able to invest at. It is slightly lower than that if we were to invest today. But those are the rates, the minimums that we would need for anything that we bid out to our local banks.
That's great, that's great. And I know Mel and I, and Rebecca and Matt, then talked about some of our idle money. We're looking at cash and putting some investments out. And I think it's always a good idea to kind of ladder things out. We looked at six month, 12 month, and 18 months. Also with the KNIP rate, or the local banks, if they're willing to match what they're offering to us. I think we're gonna see some amazing results here in the next few months here. So keep watching and stay tuned. And Mel, thank you for all your work on that. And Rebecca, too. You guys are really good at what you're doing here, so keep it up.
Thank you. And I might just mention, we put, we did go ahead and move 1.5 million dollars over to the overnight rate through KMP as well, just because their rates for their daily interest rate is higher than where it was sitting. And so then, then we know it's available when we do get around to investing it. And when we get to those, those markers and watching the rates, that's easier to move from that point then as well.
I appreciate that.
And we will continue to bid for rates every time we do go to invest in a city or any other type of investment.
Interest income quadruple from what it's been in the past. So it should look a lot better. Very great.
Thank you.
I guess traditionally, I always talk about the sales tax. But I think there's nothing to be added to what's already on there. So page 24. I'm just excited to see also the new building issues, the building permits issued. As of April 30, we had 18. And it looks like if we, that'd be projected out to about 54 homes if that pace continues. Mike, do you have anything else to add to that? Or is that pretty much what you're seeing? New family, single house, we've got 18. And also 11 manufactured homes surprised me. And would this be, how do I say it? Two wide as well as modular homes? Or is that considered a different construction?
Commissioner, that is what we're seeing as far as seeing family homes. There's a lot of activity, a lot of remodel activity as well. It's not necessarily reflected in all these two boxes.
I'm sure people in town love to hear this story. This has been an issue we've been talking about for a long time about housing. We've got some good news about, let's get the word out.
There is good news. There are a lot of houses being built. As far as the manufactured homes, your question about that, I don't know the answer to that. I can, I can find out and get that, get back to you if you'd like. But there's a lot of activity. And a lot of these are in locations in the, close to the center of the city that are eligible for NRP grants. We're gonna have a new batch of applications coming your way very soon. So there's a lot of, it's really good for the city.
And Mike, you just had a report back from the county clerk about what our neighborhood revitalization has added to our tax base?
Yeah, she said something about a million. But in the last batch, I think it was more than that. So I think that's actually a, it might be more than what she said. So I'm getting some clarification on that.
Well, and these numbers will look a lot better if the Coates houses, once the variances are, if their variances are approved out there. And those 26 or more eight houses are built out there. I mean, that's, there's a considerable amount more out there to be built. That'll be included in, in one of these permits issued down the road. So there's quite a bit there.
Yeah, there's the vacation of those setback lines and the part of pedestrian who's been on the planning commission agenda for a decision this week. So that's gonna be getting to you soon. And I think that'll do a lot to, to push that along.
That's great. I'm just glad to see that. And I think it's important to watch that. You know, you do drive through the old parts of town and suddenly go, there's a brand new house right there. You didn't realize it, you look around and see it. So I think it's great to see that infill taking place. So, so thank you, Mike. Keep up the good work. Appreciate you doing good. Page 39. Close to 38, but not.
Not to me.
No, no, no. I just was noticing, I guess Douglas may help us on this. It just looked like part of the crime went up considerably now. Maybe it's not a lot. It just shows that crime was up some. Was it from last year to this year? 99 cases versus 67 last year. It seemed like there was an increase more in aggravated assault was higher, burglary was higher, theft was higher. Any idea on what's going on here? Or what, or just are we catching more of them? That's why it's going higher? I mean, that'd be a good thing if that's the case.
I think we're just trending higher because of the warmer weather. We see an annual increase during warmer months. More people are out, unfortunately. Hopefully we catch more people.
That's, so like during Storm Yuri, we didn't have much crime, I guess, did we? When it was 20 below that. Maybe more of that, what you're saying, right?
Yeah, pray for rain, right?
Thanks, no sleep. Okay, good. All right, that was kind of why I was just under the back. So good, all right, thanks. Okay. And then I did notice there were some on 44. There was more accidents. And here's another thing, too. I didn't know there was a street called Howell. There was more to Logan and Howell Street. Is that, anybody know where Howell is? I don't know where that street is. Must intersect Logan Street. And I wonder if it was, I thought it was Bennett, or out by Bennett. But I've never heard of Howell Street. Anybody else?
It's at the intersection of Logan.
Oh, Logan and Howell. All right, there you go.
Maybe typo.
Let's see. Okay, thanks, Dex. And.
That's all I have. Well, the good thing about it, there wasn't any injuries at Logan and Howell.
That's true. Not very many at all. So, good.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions about our review of our monthly, monthly reports, except for, as I always say, good reports, again, is all from, as always, from the directors. Looked it over and valuable information is always, good, good reading material if you guys want to look in and see what's actually going on with every part of our, of our department. So good reading material. That'll move us on to continued review of our 2023 operating budget with Mel and Melandis. That'll move us on to community service funds, budget requests with Ottawa Main Street Association. Cal, you want to come on up?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, first of all, thank you for allowing me to, to move my time to this week. Last week, Team Mobile decided I didn't need a phone. So I spent four and a half hours with tech support trying to, trying to get that taken care of. So I appreciate the ability to come back this week and visit with you. I guess shall I just go ahead and start? First thing is, for the last two months, you have not received any activity reports from us. And the reason being is we've not had a quorum for a board of directors meeting. We've not had any income, nor have we had any expenses other than our fixed expenses, our rent for our building and our utilities. So we felt that there really wasn't any need to have an activity report for that. And I thought I could bring you up to speed on what we're doing in the first part of my presentation today. And a couple of things, because we've been in a pandemic and because we haven't had a board and because we've been lacking a director, we've fallen behind on some of our state and federal reports. And I wanted to bring you up to speed on those. We've been working with Ms. Landis over here to get our workers' comp and our employment insurance brought up to speed. We had not reported to the Secretary of State. And so as a result of that, we had forfeited our operating agreement. And so I've submitted all of those reports. And I believe, I tried to get hold of Mr. Geist today to see if he had sent the checks in for the application fees. He hasn't responded. So, but I do know that that's been submitted. We haven't been, it hasn't hurt us because we haven't done any fundraising. We haven't received any money. We haven't done any due solicitation, nor have we done anything that would require us to be LLC in good status for about a year and a half. So even though it's only been since February for about a year and a half, we haven't done anything that would jeopardize us as far as an LLC. The, the thing that we have ongoing is, even though we haven't had any profit, even though, and you never have profit as a, as a, not for profit, but even though we haven't had income, we did not file our 2021 tax report. And so we're in the process of doing that to the IRS. So that sort of brings you up to speed on where we are on that. Where we are, as you know, we had a contract with the city to provide services to the historic district of downtown in 2022. We have received no funds from that contract. We ask not to receive any funds because we weren't fulfilling our obligation as the contractee and didn't feel that we should have any funds coming in. So we've not received any for 2022. Richard, Commissioner Graves, and myself have met with representatives of OU. And we're talking about, because we really don't have enough money to hire a full-time director at the salaries that directors are demanding now. We're talking about at least a part-time intern from the marketing department. And we're in the process of putting together a job description for that. And I'll let Commissioner Graves talk a little bit more about that when I'm done, if, if you'd like. And we are thinking about, if we do that, then maybe we could have the money to do a part-time director. So we could have somebody to do our marketing, somebody to do our administrative, somebody to do our downtown promotions. Because we still have the spook parade. We still have the Christmas parade that we're responsible for. We still have the corner committee that we're responsible for. And by the way, I think you'll notice they're doing a really good job of keeping things going down there, along with the city departments and the volunteers that we have. So that's sort of where we are right now. I know there's been some consternation. We came to you before the pandemic and you graciously granted us funding. Then almost immediately, the pandemic hit, which shut us down for two years. And because we've had a lack of interest, because of some other outside influences, the Main Street program is in the process of basically reinventing itself. They're working on new board members. We will be trying to figure out what to do for directorship and for social media and marketing. We are keeping the office because it's a downtown presence. I think we need to keep the office. And we are going forward with the things that we normally do. If somebody had a facade grant, a $500 facade grant, we'd probably look at that. We are not doing anything with the IWW funds at the request of the state, that we not do anything. We not grant any new IWW funds until such time as we are reorganized. So that's sort of where we are. The budget proposal that I sent you, I have to admit, I just took the RFP from 2019 and sent it to you. Because right now, we don't know what a new Main Street program will look like. So I'm here today to ask you only to earmark an amount approximately equal to what you've given us in the past. So once we reorganize, we can come in and put a formal presentation together and ask you for the funds at some point in 2023. And that was $30,000 plus another $2,000 for the corner committee. The only thing I would ask that is, as we go through the process over the next six months, you do recognize the corner committee and we figure out a way to keep them viable because they are doing yeoman's job downtown of keeping our downtown looking very, very nice. So what we'd ask, we figured out a way to do that. We will not be asking for funds until we are reorganized. If we get that done in 2022, we may come back and ask you to reinstitute our payments for, from that point forward in 2022. But we would like to ask you to put a line item in the budget for downtown, for the historic district, equal to what we've had in the past. And I'd stand for questions or comments.
Miss, there's any questions or comments for Cal?
So make sure I understand. So we, we didn't fulfill the payment contract for 2022 this year, right? We have, we were 21, I mean, last year. Did we fully pay it out?
No, I think there were two months. I think we, I think in November, we requested, was it November, I think, maybe?
I don't know.
October, November, we requested that you hold payments. And then we did go ahead and sign the contract for 2022. But we have received no, in fact, we haven't even received our corner money. We're, we're just going on money that we had in our account to do the corners this year. So, and I think we have enough to finish out the year. But if we don't, we may come back to you and say we need a little money out of the budget for the corner committee. So, yeah.
So your question might go back to October of last year forward. Am I saying that right?
We have received no city funds since that time. Over a year.
When you make that request, I want to make sure I understand what Commissioner Skidmore is asking you. You're not asking for us to do a catch-up?
No, 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 not retroactive at all. No, no, no. Yeah, yeah, no, no, we, that's not our intention at all. Because we didn't provide the services for this period of time. We didn't provide the services. We can't come back and ask you for reimbursement for those funds. So, yeah, no. We would come back in with a formal request to reinstate our funds and have our, have our budget and our plan of action for you to look at at that time. You can make the decision once we submit that, whether you wanted to reinstate our funds or not.
Cal, I appreciate the admission that you took the, took the 19 request and just, you sent it in. Because for individuals who may be reading the, the packet, which is a large packet today, but it does contain a letter from, from our chamber, or at least it, it indicates that there will be a connection and a working relationship, or working agreement, actually, is what it says, and a closer affiliation with the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce. Is that something you have revisited? Or is that something we just need, you would rather look aside?
The, the operating agreement that we proposed with the chamber for, I'm assuming you're talking about Legacy Square?
Yeah, I was just going with what you had sent the packet in.
Yes, yeah, okay, yes, that was, that was.
Is that a conversation that you're having again?
No, not at all. The chamber decided to go it alone, which is fine. You know, because there hasn't been that much revenue, hasn't been that many events over there. So we really don't need it. I shouldn't speak for the chamber. It doesn't appear to me that there's an event coordinator needed for that facility yet. So, no, we're not, we're not expecting any funds from the chamber, nor will we be asking for any funds in the chamber when we put together the RFP to bring back to you for reinstatement of our funds.
Commissioners, any other questions for Cal?
No, I mean, I'll say it's, it's been a long journey trying to get a new board formed and, and trying to do it quickly and trying to figure out whether we wanted to go, you know, with an intern as really nobody had applied for the director position the whole time it had been open. So we're hoping by having an intern in place, they can at least help with a portion of the marketing, get the social media going, you know, just be a face in the building for a while and, and kind of out in the public. And so hopefully, hopefully, we're, we're working in the right direction here. And I think we are, so.
And, and no reflection on previous commissioners who've been appointed to the Main Street advisory position. Commissioner Graves has come in and done a outstanding job of diving in, trying to help us, trying to help us with our problems and trying to help us move forward into the future and really understands the need for a separate entity to just provide for the historic district downtown, working in conjunction with the chamber and the Arts Council and all the other entities that deal with a more broad economic development spectrum, but with focus on the Main Street. So we appreciate her efforts in that.
Well, I appreciate your commitment to the Main Street Association. I know it's been difficult for, you know, a little bit now, but you, you've really been committed to it. And that's wonderful. And certainly you too, Commissioner Graves. I mean, you guys have put a lot into it and thinking outside the box, you know? Thinking about OU and trying to get an intern to, to fill that position is, is great ingenuity in a sense. So it's great to hear that you guys are really trying to find solutions.
Well, we really appreciate you all's support.
And I was just, I'm in full commitment of support for the corners. I mean, even if we've got to do something about that, I'm in full commitment. That having a vibrant downtown is a necessity for the city of Ottawa.
Thank you.
There's donation.
City of Ottawa donations? I mean, sure.
We actually, we actually, a lady in the community that had been active in the community passed away a few weeks ago. And one of her beneficiaries of her memorial funds was the downtown corners committee of the chamber. So we received not quite $1,000 from that, so.
Awesome. Today, I'll just add that there's been a club, an old car club of some kind downtown. I don't know if it's organized or what it was.
It's the Model A Club.
Yeah, it's the Model A Club. Some of them are from Vernon, Colorado. I actually had a conversation with them. I was eating at Ray's for lunch and talked to some of them. There's a banquet in Olathe tonight, so they're passing through. But they stopped by to see the oldest working cinema in, in the world.
In the universe, we think.
Well, in the universe, I believe. We're still waiting on that information to get back. You're light years away. But yes, they stopped by to see. Some of them are Wichita, some of them are Colorado and things like that.
I just saw it, old depot.
I just saw it walking through downtown, people pointing at the buildings. And I think it's, it is, you're right. We need to have a vital downtown.
Yeah, pretty historic downtown, you know? All in all, when you think about the Hutchison's and the Kalox that started it and where they went after they left here. So we need to preserve that.
For sure.
Anything else?
Hopefully so. Cal, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cal.
All right. That will move us on to our ordinance amending Article 17 of the zoning regulations on mixed-use districts with our Director Hall.
Good afternoon. I have some slides that are gonna be pulled up here in a minute. Move it better by setting it aside. Probably.
Just chair you.
I will just, I'll take this chair. All right. Okay, so why is this on the agenda? So a few months back, thank you, thank you. So a few months back, the rezon application for 2331 South Cedar was on the planning commission agenda. And it was, at the time of the public hearing, it was discovered that the minimum district size was three acres. And the 2331 South Cedar rezoning application, that property is 2.1 acres. Staff came back to you with a report on that situation and a presentation, you agreed presentation about potentially amending the tech, or providing a text amendment for the mixed-use districts. And the city commission directed staff to proceed with working on that. So what we did is we drafted something. We drafted something and had a study session with the planning commission. And they took a lot of interest in this. Went through quite a process where we looked at alternatives and everything. And, and so this is what's proposed, this, this, this is the text that's proposed. So, no, this is the current text, excuse me. So as you can see here, no area zone as M U R C or M U C I. And then M U R C means mixed-use residential, commercial. M U C I is mixed-use commercial industrial. It must comprise an entire city block or three acres, whichever is the lesser. One thing I want to remind everyone of is that any rezoning to M U R C or M U C I will be subject to the rezoning process and requires a recommendation from the planning commission and approval of the city commission. So there's a tendency to think, oh, this is going to be automatic if the district size is reduced. It still has to go through a process. There's still a lot of analysis that goes into that. So what's recommended from the planning commission is we tweak the language of the, the intent language for the ordinance for the district. I didn't feel, with the direction I got from the city commission, that this was a rehab hall of the entire article on mixed-use districts. So this is pretty limited. More could be done to it. But took out some language. For example, it says involve a variety of property owners and uses. That's, I think that's pretty narrow. That'd be pretty limiting if that, that's what was required for consideration. And so this was revised slightly. So what's being recommended is right here, as you can see, there's a lot of text being crossed out. But what this does is if, if you, if someone is proposing M U R C zoning, they have to have one acre district size, or they have to be adjacent to one of these districts, I, C, or P. And in that case, a minimum district size does not apply. What's also being proposed is that in the case of M U C I zoning, it does need to require, or it does have to have one acre or more, regardless of the circumstances. So I'm gonna go over quite a bit here, and I just want to let you know upfront. So what I'll be showing you here is the existing mixed-use districts in Ottawa. I think that's important to understand what those look like. Lot and parcel sizes in Ottawa, just so you kind of have a frame of reference. What's the size of a half lot, for example? The size of a typical lot. And look at some potential candidates for mixing zoning. Thinking of the intent of the, of the districts is that it, the idea is that it's to provide for the adaptive reuse of existing buildings, existing sites. It's not really meant for large greenfield type development. Doesn't mean you couldn't do some of that. But, but that's really the intent of it. And I want to show you the alternatives reviewed by the planning commission. They really wanted, they really did get into discussing this and looking at alternatives. And then I also want to show how the recommended language would work in practice. So a couple of terms that need to be clarified upfront. District size versus a lot or parcel size. So a district could be multiple parcels or multiple lots. If you have multiple lots that are joining one another and they're all the same zoning district, that's a district. A lot is a single lot or a single parcel. Adjacent versus adjoining. So adjoining means clearly the lot is abutting the other lot. It shares a lot line, a parcel line. Adjacent means that, but it also means, say, across the street. So a piece of land across the street, that would be adjacent, but it wouldn't be adjoining. There's a, there's a street separating. So this is the 2331 South Cedar site, the proposed rezoning. Again, this is 2.1 acres. So here are some existing mixed-use zoning districts in Ottawa. And the light lavender color, that's, that's the M U C I on the, on the left side there. And the dark lavender is the M U R C. M U C I being mixed-use commercial industrial. If you're familiar with, with Wilson Street west of Main Street, there are a lot of relatively small parcels of land. And, and those were through city action when the, I believe, when the zoning code was, was adopted several years ago, those were rezoned to M U C I. And you can see some of these lots on the north end of Maine are M U R C. And then you can see the, the properties on the right side of the screen, that's M U R C. That's it, Maine and Logan. This is the south end of town. There's some large undeveloped parcels, tracts that are zoned M U. And then we found this one that is only one and a half acres. So it does not meet the minimum district size. We're not sure why. We think that when this property was annexed, there was a proposal to redevelop the site. And it got adopted this way, got approved this way.
Mike, where's that one at?
That's at Logan, and I think that's near the cemetery. By the cemetery. That's not Cherry Cross Street. I can't remember what Cross Street is. I apologize. That's not Cherry, is it? Cherry's further west.
Sorry, I was distracted by somebody. What, where's this Cherry?
Davis. This would be on further west of our bank, right? The cemetery.
Is that, I think that is Davis. Yep. I believe that's Davis.
Going straight, straight north in the middle?
Yeah.
Davis.
I believe so.
Okay.
So that's kind of an anomaly. It's only an acre and a half. It actually never got developed for anything but a residential use. It's a single-family residence, as far as I know. Okay, lot and parcel sizes. So these are all, think of these as potential candidates. And this land on the south side, south end of Maine, where is that, Princeton? Princeton? And kind of in the area of the Price Chopper. There are a lot of, there are a number of single-family residences up on that street. Those are a half to three quarters of an acre. This is North Maine. And one thing about North Maine, when I look at North Maine, there are old buildings that some of them are underutilized. There are single-family dwellings that are immediately adjacent or adjoining lots that have commercial uses. And that dark red color, that's C3 zoning, that's, that's our most intensive commercial zoning, C zoning. And these lots are typically a fifth to a third of an acre. And they're zoned, those are zoned R2 residential. And I, potentially, based on the intent of the, of the mixed-use zoning language, those are potential candidates. So this is a central city location in the, kind of the, it's kind of like an orange color comes up, you know, orange color. That's our C4 central business district zoning. And, and you can see there's residential zoning adjacent to it. And these lots in the central city, the central city location, the residential lots are quarter acre to a half acre or more in size. So this is a, an edge residential location. And that's where you get into some bigger lot sizes. And they vary quite a bit. Some are only a third of an acre. Some are over an acre. But lots over acre are not really that typical. So these are the alternatives I was discussing or I mentioned that we, we reviewed with the planning commission. The first one was what staff recommended coming out of this was one acre or more. There's no distinction between the M U R C, M U C I districts in this case. No minimum one adjacent, but no minimum district size one adjacent to industrial, commercial, or public use district. There was some concern about that expressed by the planning commission. They thought it might be a little too open-ended. Second, three acres or more, one acre minimum one adjacent to I, C, or P district. One acre minimum in all circumstances. Or somewhere to that, a higher minimum standard, like one and a half acre, two acre minimum. And as you look at the, the way the lots are, the block sizes, there might be some justification to go to one and a half acre or two acre. That's not what's recommended. That's not what staff's recommending. And the fifth alternative, same as number one, except a one acre minimum implies for all mixed-use commercial industrial zoning. And it recognizes the mixed-use, commercial industrial zoning district allows more intensive uses than the mixed-use residential commercial district. And that's the, a fifth alternative is what the planning commission is recommending. I will say in all of these alternatives, in every case, it would allow the rezoning of 2331 South Cedar. Okay, back to some potential candidates here. So if you look at this, this slide, by the way, the way these maps are set up, the one on the left is the same area as the one on the right. The one on the right says the zoning layer turned on. So as proposed, these sites that are, are highlighted on the right, those would be candidates. Those could be considered for rezoning. Again, they still have to go through a process. And because those are, they're less than acre, but they are adjacent to commercial and industrial zoning. The yellow is light industrial. That dark red color is, is C3 commercial. One thing I want to point out too, and I'll show this, I think, on the next slide. I'm not sure that's the best slide to show that, demonstrate that. But let's go back up to this. So just so you know, if you look at that lot right there, that lot is adjacent to this lot that's on C3. It's not adjoining, but it's adjacent. So under the proposed language, that could be rezoned. Oops. Okay. So these are just some more sizes for reference. So in this area of town, this, this half block is about 1.5 acres. This half block is 1.5 acres. It's not true when you get into central Ottawa. That half of a residential block is 2.07 acres. That one residential city block is 4.34 acres. Now, why is that more than twice? That, it's, must be because of that alley in the middle. Typical residential lot, this is a point of reference as quarter of an acre. So if you think about, this is probably not a great candidate for this type of zoning anyway. But I think one of the questions that I got asked in this process quite a bit was where did this three acre minimum come from? Why is it three acres? I, I actually talked to my predecessor and she, she said that wasn't really a magic number. That's what she told me. It came out of the process when, when the districts were being created as part of the, either the original zoning code creation or amendment to the zoning code. And it was probably, most likely, from what I can tell, it was to avoid the mixed-use districts from being used for spot zoning. Because if you think about a mixed-use district, if it's residential, commercial, someone might have a home, it's in a residential district. They want to operate a auto repair shop at their home. If they're, let's say they're a quarter of an acre or half an acre. Maybe that's not appropriate. Maybe that's, that shouldn't happen. Again, still will have to go through a process. But if you consider that, this half block. I keep turning the wrong button here. Let's say someone is right there, not a lot, they want to do that. Or let's say someone owns a lot and they want to bake a lot next to them and they want to build a little commercial, maybe a small retail store there. Not sure that would be a great location for that, surrounded by residential. So the requirement of, of that being an acre as proposed, this entire half block is 2.07 acres. So you'd have to, you'd have to assemble a lot of these lots to make that work. So I think what is being proposed would head off that concern about spot zoning. Okay. So another thing that was asked quite a bit by the commission was what are the permitted and conditional uses? So in the M U R C, the permitted uses are any use permitted in the R2 and R3 or R3 zoning district. Districts, excuse me, except schools would be a conditional use. Any use permitted in the C1 or C2 zoning districts. Conditional uses, any use allowed as a conditional use in the R2 or R3 zoning districts. Any use allowed as a conditional use in the C1, C2 zoning districts. Many stores would be allowed as a conditional use. Brew pubs as a conditional use. So I can answer, try to answer more questions about permitting and conditional uses. There are tables in the packet on pages 132 and 137 in the agenda packet for the M U R C district, the residential and commercial districts. Okay, so M U C I. So under this zoning, any use permitted in the C3 zoning district, any use permitted in the I1 zoning district. Conditional uses, any use allowed as a conditional use in the C3 zoning district, any use allowed as a conditional use in the I1 zoning district. And the, in the packet, there are tables taken around our zoning ordinance, zoning regulations that list the permitted and conditional uses on pages 134 and 140 of the packet, or 140 of the packet. So some other considerations to think about. Mixed-use zoning is not like other zoning. It has some form-based elements. It has design standards that is not, that do not generally apply to the residential, commercial, and industrial districts. Keep in mind also, there is no minimum district size for residential, commercial, and industrial districts currently. Someone wants to apply for C3 zoning and it's a quarter of an acre. There's nothing limiting them based on district, district size. Any rezoning to M U R C or M U C I will be subject to the rezoning process, analysis of the factors, and approval of the city commission. In other words, meaning minimum district size alone is not sufficient. So I keep repeating myself, but that, that's something to really remember here. I think there's, there's not a lot of risk in, in having a little small district size. And I'll take any questions you have. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Director Hall? Chair?
Good indication.
Would you like to proceed, Commissioners? I, go ahead.
I mean, I'm not ready to move it on. I'd certainly like to discuss it next week.
I'm in favor of that too. I know typically we'd like to put it on a couple of study sessions and, and discuss it. And that's certainly something I would like to do on this one. So a lot of information in this packet that we certainly need to review just to, just to see if, you know, who are making the right decision.
In your meeting, did you guys discuss the adjacent versus adjoining in terms of, because I saw you went with adjacent. Obviously, that was probably a determining, partially determining factor.
That was discussed a bit. I, I, that's what I presented to them and we went over it, kind of explained it.
Just that way.
Because that's often misunderstood. Adjoining is pretty clear in the dictionary what that means. Adjacent's a little more ambiguous, but just in my practice, I've always considered across the street adjacent.
Is that because it's given you a little bit more leniency kind of in the decision-making?
I think more leniency also, I think it, in my professional opinion, when you have a use on one side of the street, across the street, it, it makes it, there's like a buffer, but it's also tends to be compatible. I think rezoning the back half of blocks on, on a major street is more of a concern. But yeah, it's just a little more flexible.
Mike, I don't think you really talked about why this came up. You just did not pull this like a rabbit out of a hat. This came up because it was specific request to do more housing in a unique way in the community. Is that not correct?
That is correct. So this is all, this was the impetus for it. It's not the only reason for it. I think that's an important distinction. The impetus for it was that we got this rezon application by Josh Walker, who is here. And we started looking at that and C3, or excuse me, R3 zoning, and this will come up in the next meeting, or next item. R3 zoning was not really a good choice for that for various reasons. They aren't really great candidates. M U R C was really the best way to address that. And then what was not understood initially is that there was a minimum district size limit. And that was kind of discovered late in the process. Even if that was discovered earlier, this amendment would still be required. I don't think there was a really great way to handle that other than this district. And so where this was going, staff's recommendation of planning commission is we shouldn't just, oh, we're done. Can't go any further with this rezoning because our district size is limited. Let's look at this. Let's consider this and move forward. And really, if you look at the intent of the mixed-use zoning, it is to allow redevelopment of small lots and reuse of small lots. So that's, that's really what triggered this.
And this and the next item are intended, they are tied together.
Yeah. But this could also be involved with other projects, you know, that we've either had discussions on or could be coming up in the future that streamlines the permitting process if this discussion is, is had and approved.
Yes, I believe so. So there are lots where someone might want to redevelop them. They might have a great idea to rehab an old building. That's really, that's the, kind of the golden opportunity for this type of zoning. It doesn't mean you have to be doing that. But let's say someone wants to do a project and it's not appropriate for that to be rezoned to C4, C3, or industrial. This would be a tool for getting that done. And it provides some kind of other design controls that don't apply any other district, districts, excuse me. So in that way, yeah, it's, it's, it allows for more options. And it, to me, it facilitates infill development and renovation of, of areas where there's already infrastructure, there are already buildings, where you have an urban fabric. And that's, so I, I really feel like this is a good thing.
But it doesn't create the wild, wild west either. We still have a buffer with the planning commission and the city commission to say yea or nay for some of these projects.
It still has to go through a process. It still has to, we have to analyze it in terms of the factors provided by law before it can get approved.
Commissioners, any other questions for Director Hall? Okay, now we'll move to the ordinance for rezon request for property at 2331 South Cedar from a C3 general commercial to mixed-use residential, commercial district.
Okay. So this is a project that we've been trying to referring to. Okay, so this, this application, this proposal is a rezoning from C3 to M U R C. That's mixed-use residential, commercial for the conversion of the motel to affordable workforce apartments. The recommendation is approval contingent on minimum district size being amended. So in order for this to be approved, the minimum district size needs to be approved. Or the, the change to the minimum district size needs to be approved. Or some variation of it. Size and location, 2.1 acres at 2331 South Cedar Street. Current zoning is C3 commercial. It's surrounded by C3 commercial. C3, that's our predominant commercial district at the south end of town. Future land use map in the comprehensive plan identifies it, envisions it for commercial development, for commercial land use. So the site, it's the existing Econo Lodge. The surrounding land uses and hood load has the commercial uses such as hotels, retail, restaurants, gas station, gas stations, et cetera. Analysis, comprehensive plan goal four, housing quality and diversity. Support development of affordable and appropriate housing for all segments of the community. Mixed-use residential, commercial was recommended as the best option. The alternative rezoning options to allow affordable, multi-family housing at this location aren't really recommended. R3 high-density residential, the density doesn't quite fit. It's actually denser than what's allowed under R3. And it's really not, that's really not what R3 is really intended for mainly. C4 certainly allows dense residential, but C4 is our central business district. And this is really not the central business district, really calls for a different type of zoning. We do have a planned unit development overlay district option in the zoning code. The PUD option really is not intended for this type of use or situation. It's really for someone who's developing a larger site, multiple uses, deals with things like access and maybe there's a need for variances to standards. That's really what the PUD is for. And it's more complicated than necessary for what Mr. Walker's trying to do. That would, me and he would have to go back and prepare some kind of master plan. I'm not even sure I'd do that. The mixed-use residential, commercial district. M U R C district facilitates compatible mixed-use activity. The objectives of the M U R C district include retention, attractive, attraction of businesses, workplaces, and residences for adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of existing buildings. Permitted uses, any use permitted in the R2, R3, C1, or C2 districts. Conditional uses, any use conditional in an R2, R3, C1, or C2 districts. The findings in support of rezoning. So what the zoning code requires, what the zoning regulations required, require, excuse me, and this reflects case law, the golden factors for zoning. It requires that 13 factors be considered. be considered. So we have all those, those are all in the report. The planning commission adopted the findings that are in the report, it's in front of you. To summarize, rezoning is necessary because of changing needs and conditions. And that's a factor. M U R C zoning is the best zoning option for the property and land use. Proposed zoning is compatible with the uses and zoning of surrounding properties. And proposed zoning meets the comprehensive plan goal of support development of affordable and appropriate housing for all segments of the community. So again, the 13 findings are in the staff report, they're on this slide and the following slides. And I'm not going to go through all these. If you have a question about any of them, I'm sure that that's a relief. But be happy to answer any questions you have.
I like everything I see. I like what we're doing here. And I guess from a particular standpoint, what we would go through, if next Monday we're going to look at again, it'll be the 13th, then we could vote on the 15th tonight, right? On the timing of all this, okay. I think we need to go as soon as possible, which Mr. Walker would like to have done yesterday, but I think we'll be soon as we can get to what it looks like.
Director Hall, I may have missed this, but can you just tell us, because I guess some of us may not know, what's happening with this project? And what I mean is, we know it's a hotel now, what's it going to be? I mean, that, why are we even looking at an ordinance for rezon request?
I can tell you within the report.
Sure.
Conversion to 44 apartments, some of those will be, I think some of those are two-bedroom apartments.
Josh, come on up and kind of tell us a little bit about it.
Oh, wow, me too.
Thanks, we appreciate it.
Well, to answer the direct question, the intent is to convert it into 44 apartments that will be primarily studio or one-bedroom, and then a handful of them would be two-bedroom. But final design is yet to be done.
Is there a market you're looking for particularly? I mean, is it going to be for OU students, you think, or is there?
I mean, I, I think it would be attractive for OU students, but it's intended to be workforce housing. You know, conceptually, if somebody is single and they work in American Eagle, living in a studio apartment would be probably very attractive, or a couple for that matter, so.
And the rent would be according to market prices or?
Yeah, that, that's yet to be determined. We're kind of ordering new ground, at least in this community with that, so I'm not sure exactly what market will be. And then we also have to work through the pro forma, as you know, material costs and construction costs are certainly going up.
And then when they build hotels, a lot of times they don't build parking lots to accommodate 100% because they're never 100%. But is this one adequate for your needs, you think, parking?
So, and you can certainly speak to this, Director Hall, but because so many of them are studio and one-bedroom, it allows for, what's the term in the zoning ordinance for economy parking, I think is what it is, or efficiency parking?
Efficiency, yeah.
Yeah, so it meets that requirement a bit, yes.
It, it'll have 1.5 parking spaces per unit based on 44 units, based on my calculations.
Yes.
67 spaces.
Well, I appreciate you letting us know what your intent is and the reason being is because a lot of people are watching the meetings and so, you know, if they get the information, we certainly want to hear their input of what they think, you know, of the project. I mean, I, I think it's a great project. I really appreciate your ingenuity thinking about, you know, outside the box of what you could, you know, put into a building like that. It's, it's a, it's a great addition to our community and having a 21-year-old that would look for a single studio apartment, like to get them out of the basement, would certainly appreciate some of those necessities for sure.
Sure.
Just so anybody who's watching, who doesn't have to read between the lines, this is not designed to be for a growing family. This is not designed to bring three kids and move on in, because this is a really busy part of the community. And if there were kids around and they were having to be outside, there's not exactly a bunch of play area or place to be, correct?
No, you're exactly right. That's, since there's only a handful of two-bedrooms in this one, yeah, it's, it's very much intended for a single individual or maybe a young couple without kids.
Commissioners, any other questions for Director Hall or Mr. Walker? All right, it sounds to me like we'll probably hold it over for another week, have a discussion again on it next week, and we decide how we move it forward then. Josh, thank you. Director Hall, thank you.
Thank you.
That'll move us on to our base, Building a Stronger Economy Grant Transfer of Funds with Ms. Landis.
Welcome back. Thank you. Well, as you all know, we did receive the base grant funding, and the base grant is Building a Stronger Economy. And the amount that the city received was $5 million. Part of what we're working through right now is the timeline so that we can meet the requirements of the grant and kind of putting together the checklist of all the things that we have to be able to report back to them that are being accomplished. One of those early-on items is to prove that we're able to match, provide the 25% match to the grant. So what we've done is we've gone through and we've allocated kind of how those dollars might work throughout all four projects. And we do have three of those projects, we, let me back up. We actually kind of split these out into two sections, right? So we have a north quarter project and we have the proximity park projects, three actually in proximity parks. So we took a look at them to see how could we accomplish allocating the grant dollars because the actual cost of all the projects is going to be far more than the grant dollars that have been received. And so what, what we really need to be able to show is our initial contribution, which is the 1.25 million. And our estimates are what we're proposing there is that we would do $150,000 from the wastewater fund, which we would basically contribute towards the north project. That is a wastewater lift station project. It will include a myriad of other things, like crossing the river, all those types of things. But contributing 150,000 from the wastewater fund and the remaining amount from the proximity park sales tax fund. And that fund is what was that, that those sales tax dollars were intended for, the infrastructure improvements out there for that industrial park. And so it does fit well, it is, there are available funds in that sales tax fund. We forecasted that out for, to make sure that we can accommodate all of the future payments. And we've done a pretty conservative, look at the sales tax, excuse me, receipts for that fund to say, to be able to show that we can manage this plus the additional funds that we would need to accomplish the remainder of the construction for these three projects for proximity parks. So really, what we brought in front of you is the requirements under the grant funding say that we need to have proof that we have commission approval to contribute the grant match, which is the 1.25 million. So that's, we did construct a motion for a future meeting, a future regular meeting, but wanted to bring you the initial conversation first this Monday, and again, if you'd like, next Monday, and then put it on to your June 15th meeting if we can, and then we'll be able to at least report that that transfer has been made of those funds and report that on our next quarterly report at the end of June if that's okay to move ahead. We see that as the right, the right direction to move ahead, but. Do you have questions about that?
I certainly appreciate how you separated those, you know, those, those funding options. And the reason being is because if we wouldn't have the base money and we would have done a lift station, that would have probably come from the wastewater fund somehow eventually anyway. So it's nice that, it's kind of responsible for taking care of that way, that lift station, and certainly the tax dollars that have been generated from proximity park are taken care of that part of theirs, too. So I appreciate the thinking about that.
Okay. And we don't have all of our final construction estimates, of course, so we can't tell you exactly what the additional amount of dollars are going to be that we need after, after the 1.25 million for grant match. But we will have that relatively soon, over the next several months, we'll be, we'll have those RFPs put out, we'll get those bids back, and then be able to give you a good update in the coming months as to what else, but what additional dollars we'll need to.
For example, inspection on the projects, how are we going to do inspection? What level of inspection will it be? That's kind of an additional cost that we need to, that we will have numbers for.
Is that independent inspection?
On city projects, the city generally hires the engineering company. On a few rare projects, we do the inspection, but on something this sophisticated and involving federal funds, I suspect there's probably something inside those regulations that say we will hire a third-party inspector. And what, what that means is that they check key points along the way of the construction and make sure it's being done according to the plans and specs that have been approved by the city, that you're getting your money's worth.
Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hall, Ms. Landis? Sorry. He's been here all afternoon. I figured he'd come up and talk about it, too. Any other questions for Ms. Landis? If not, it sounds like, yeah, we'll hold it over, talk, talk about it again next week.
Okay.
Let's see what we got.
Okay, very good, thank you.
That moves us on to resolution of authorizing consumption of alcoholic liquor on a public street for Not Lost Brewing. Melissa, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, today we've received a request from Not Lost Brewing to partner with the Bike Across America event on June 17th to extend their premise out onto the sidewalk and into the street. And so this resolution is what's required from ABC to do an extension of premises.
Commissioners, any questions for Melissa?
I guess this involves all the normal fencing and, and checking on driver license for, okay, John.
Well, I think it's John Cohen, Howard Chamber of Commerce. I think it's important for the commission to know that the chamber's in the process of asking that Main Street be closed from Second Street to Third Street that day. And so now this is a, in a request in addition to that. We're still waiting for full, all the directors to fully bless that, but that's the day Bike Across Kansas is going to be there. And what we're planning to do is have live music in, on the street, ORC and Auto Bike and Trailer are going to provide games for our guests. At present, we're expecting about 800 guests sometime that afternoon, evening. And then at 6 o'clock, the party goes over to Legacy Square, and there's going to be a Travis Mervin concert and also boot trucks and different things like that. So originally, the Gentry's had come and said, would we apply for a beer garden? And I said, well, if we apply to get the streets closed, then you can separately apply for a beer garden because the street's not going to be an issue then at that point. This request is better understood or works better if you, if you know the original request to the chamber to close that street that afternoon.
So Commissioners, how would you like to deal with item six?
When is the event? Is it the 15th?
17.
Yes. Mayor, so if we could, we're requesting that this be approved today just because of the timeline. We have to get it to ABC and do the extension of premise. So if possible, we'd like to get the resolution approved today.
Well, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in favor of approving it. I mean, we've done this a couple of times before, and I think this will be a great event that happens downtown and brings some, some life to downtown. So I'm in favor of approving it today.
I would agree. I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion's approved. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, moves on to comments by our city manager.
All right, Commissioners, I only have one, just to remind you, today is the 78th anniversary of the invasion of Europe by the Allied forces that eventually brought about the freeing of the continent from fascism. There you go.
Comments by our city commissioners, Ken from the Grays.
I have no comment.
Commissioner Kayla.
No, Mr. Ten.
Commissioner Clayton.
Only comment, I love seeing work happen on sidewalks. Working out a house north of Forest Park and driving by there, seeing all those sidewalks going in for, from the rail trail over to the park. I see a lot of traffic kind of around that area, and so I'm excited by that, so that's it.
I agree. Mayor Prokhorov, you want to say more?
Also excited at what Calmar just announced today with regard to their expansion, so I'm really glad to see a partner like that. My dad actually worked for them back in the mid-'50s as a draftsman, and so it's been a long, a long time ago, but nonetheless.
Before you were a buyer.
Before, yes.
Before I was.
And so they have a good plan, a good company to work with, and we're glad for their investment in our community for sure, so thank you, Director Calmar and.
Cardo Tech.
Back when drafts, when you really actually did.
Real drafting.
On that board.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. I have no comments, but I will make, I move recess into executive session for the purpose of engaging confidential communications with the governing body's attorney specifically to receive legal advice, and that we reconvene in this room at, I'm going to give us five minutes to come back. Are we okay with that? And then we reconvene at 5:30, and there will no, will be no action taken. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.